Okay. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. My name is David Burke. I'm the mayor of Cypress. And welcome to my town hall. I wanted to do a listening tour this year, which is just a series of events where I can be out in the community, where any resident can come speak to me and share their concerns and ask questions. And so this is part of that listening tour. I've never done a town hall before. I've never seen a mayoral town hall before. And so I ask that you bear with me because I don't know how this will go. I just wanted to show up somewhere and give people a chance to offer feedback, ask questions, or simply just come and listen. So if you have a question, I would ask that you fill out one of these cards and place it on the table with your name and contact info, and then I'll get to questions. I understand some of you may just have comments. And if you want to comment, that's what the microphone there is for. So I figured maybe a decent way to do this would be to start with some questions, and then go to comments. And then if there's more questions, we can jump back and just go on. And hopefully, we have a good discussion. Thank you, everybody, for turning out. I think this is a great turnout for an event like this. I wanted to make some brief introductory remarks. And for the questions, also, I wanted to say if you could limit yours to initially one per person, so that everyone has a chance to get a question asked. I think that would be a great way to start, and we'll see where we go from there. A few ground rules. The focus of the event is issues in the city of Cypress. And I want to keep the focus on that. I know there's a lot going on nationally or otherwise politically, but I want people to be able to come together and hear things and discuss what's going on right here in Cypress. So I hope we can kind of stick to that subject matter. And I just want to say a few things before you jump in. So I'm David Burke. I was elected to the Cypress City Council in 2022. And I became the mayor at the end of 2024, and I'm serving as mayor this year. Serving as the mayor of Cypress is the honor of a lifetime for me. It's going by very quickly. It's been a great experience. And the thing I love most about it is getting to go out in the community, attend so many events, and get to know so many people. Because there are so many great organizations and residents in our community volunteering, supporting our seniors and our kids and our students. So I'm just very grateful for this and appreciative of all the support and everything that all of you contribute to our community. Some of my top priorities are fiscal responsibility, more transparency, more responsiveness from government, improving our parks, and programs to support every resident, and trying to raise the level of discourse in our city government. A few of the things that I'm glad we've been able to accomplish so far along those lines are fiscal responsibility. Many of you have probably heard that the city of Cypress is on track to have our pension trust match our unfunded pension liability by the end of the decade. That's something that's very difficult to accomplish. The pension unfunded liability tends to range in the fifty to sixty million dollars. Fifty to sixty million dollars. So the fact that we're in a position to get there is wonderful. And it's a testament to those who came before us on the council, who kind of set up the trust and contributed to it. And I was proud to play a role in trying to set that goal of getting there by the end of the decade. I also care a lot about transparency and responsiveness. And one of the things we've been able to do this year is we created a new agenda policy for how council members can get items on the agenda. And whereas before, I think a lot of items would be proposed behind closed doors and pop up, now our policy is that council members mention them during meetings, discuss them, and so residents have more notice of what's going on. And I thought we've been able to do some good things as a result. Like I know E-bike is something that's a big concern for a lot of residents. Residents brought that up. And two of our council members, Chang and Mayor Pro Temino, had drawn up an agenda and presentation about E-bike city rules. And so I'm glad we're able to agendize things like that and try and be responsive to your concerns. I'm also passionate about our parks. And we created a subcommittee this year to look at which parks would benefit from having additional shade over the playground and which playgrounds we should consider upgrading sooner rather than later. And so I'm glad we're able to make progress on something like that. We'll be working with the Recreation and Community Services Commission. And hopefully, that means meaningful improvements to a lot of our parks in the next few years. I also like supporting our local youth programs. And one cool thing that you've probably heard me mention a lot is our Cypress Library has something now called the Library of Things, which is you can't just check out books, but you can check out games, technology, passes to parks, musical instruments, and things like that. I used to serve on the Orange County Library Board, and I was able to get Cypress kind of moved up in the queue. And then I'm really grateful to my colleagues on the council because just recently, we agreed to give nonprofit grant funding, a matching funds grant, to an organization called the Friends of Cypress Library to fund the Library of Things even more so. And I think we're going to have literally the best library of things in all of Orange County. So I'm really excited about that development. In terms of local government, I also think it's important to try and focus on the issues and have respectful sibling discourse. You know, I know that can be a challenge in today's environment. It's something I try and do the best I can, is keep the focus on the issues. And one thing maybe some people don't know about me is even though politics can be very partisan, I'm not particularly a partisan person. I have a lot of issues with the kind of way that the American two-party system has led to this, us against them mentality at a lot of levels. And especially at the local level, I just, I don't think that's how it should be. Because most of the issues we focus on are not partisan at all. And so that's why I think it's important to try and keep the focus on the issues, just what's going to help our residents, what's going to be good for the community. And hopefully, we can consider moving in that direction. So that's largely it from me for my remarks. This is for you. This is your opportunity to ask questions, offer feedback, offer comments. And so I'll start by grabbing questions and put them on the table, and then we can move into some comments and...
Wait, wait, wait. Have you said comments? And thank you for looking at the time. Can you just talk about that before we know that recording's going on?
Oh, so it looks like there is some recording going on. I guess just FYI, so...
Yeah, it's a bit nice with video and audio.
I don't know. There's... Can you let us know?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is it audio and video recording?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah, there's also, I see, being recorded by one of my colleagues back there as well. So, you know, we've got recording going on, just FYI.
Well, that was a question for...
Oh, some of these cards are blank, or most of the cards I have are blank, so... All right, I'll try and take these in some sort of order. So I think the first question I got is, what is your favorite thing about Cypress? There's a lot of them. So my family used to live in Lakewood, which is not very far away. And it's actually interesting because a lot of families I've spoken with used to live in Lakewood. And they have the same story of why they moved to Cypress, which is our story. We had a son, and we were looking for a community with good schools that was safe. And that's Cypress. And so generally, I love the overall vibe of the community in terms of our safety and the wonderful families and parents that amite at our schools. Being able to walk to parks. Almost anywhere you lived in Cypress, you got a park within walking distance. So I think that's a fantastic thing. But as I said, I guess ultimately, my favorite thing is probably the spirit of the residents and how much they care about the city and how involved they want to be. You know, being an elected official, I meet a lot of other elected officials. And I know elected officials in another city, I'm not going to mention their name, but they have their commissions and they have vacancies for years that they can't find residents to fill the vacancies on their commissions. Here in Cypress, we just conducted commissioner interviews the past two days. We had twenty-eight candidates for five spots. And if you try to volunteer at the senior center, you get the same thing. I tried to volunteer when I moved here, and I was told, "You'll have to get on the waiting list." That's not easy to find. And so I think the dedication, the willingness that people have to contribute, whether by volunteering, by helping out their school, by helping out the local sports. I see our Community Festival Association president, vice president back there. They help put on the community festival every year. They would get paid anything. I used to be an event producer. It's hard. I don't know if I would do it for free. But they do, and we have a lot of people like that in the city. And so I think that's my favorite thing about Cypress. Why don't Cypress Parks have swimming pools? I think it would be a good family or form of recreation. So I guess that's an interesting one. I know we did a sort of Parks and Facilities survey, I want to say maybe back in 2016 or 2017, and we asked residents about what amenities they were interested in in our community, what things they'd like to have. And I think that a pool was not the top on the list, but it was somewhere on the list. I think a gymnasium was also somewhere on the list. And so were some other things that we, you know, we currently don't have. I think a dog park was also on the list. But it's really about trade-offs, right? And so we've made major investments in our parks the past five years or so, particularly Lexington Park and Arnold Cypress Park are, I think, two of the biggest projects we've had. And so I think those investments have been a great asset to a lot of elements of our community, but you can't have it all. And so I think that, you know, things like a pool or a gymnasium, we don't currently have in our park repertoire. But personally, it's not something I'd be opposed to considering or looking into. I know someone else reached out to me via email a while back about, "Hey, what about like a splash pad or some other water-friendly event for kids?" And yeah, I'm certainly, I think it'd be great to look at our parks collectively as a whole inventory and say, "What do we have and what are we missing?" And is there a way we could take one of our twenty-two parks and add a splash pad at one or add a dog park at one to kind of give Cypress residents all the different amenities? I'd love to consider doing that. So that's the history I know. I don't know if the council's ever voted on the idea up or down of having a pool, but that's the best answer I can give. Why do you want to fire and replace many who have held positions in the city for so long? They know what they're doing. Okay, there's another question here, so I'll get to some others and then come back if we have time for the second question. I wouldn't say that I have a desire to fire people who have been in the city for so long. I'm not quite sure what that's referring to, but that's the answer I can give to the question. What is your favorite park in Cypress? What are the names of parks that are getting new shades? So I'm happy about the parks questions. Favorite park in Cypress? It's tough. So I have a very sentimental attachment to Willow Park. A lot of you may know it as the Duck Park or the Ducky Park because that's the closest to my house, and I've literally been there probably a thousand times. That's where I walk, take my son when he was younger in the stroller, go to Willow Park, push him on the swings, hold him over the lake, show him where a turtle is, show him the ducks, explain the difference between a duck and sometimes a chicken or even a turkey. That would be a good park, so I like that one a lot. Veterans Park is another great one for playmates. And then Lexington Park has been really nice for kids' birthday parties. My kids are about the age where they're playing organized sports, so I'm more in the playground, kids' birthday party stage. But those are my favorites. And then what parks are getting the new shades? So that's something we need to figure out. And we're having our Recreation Commission make recommendations to myself and council member Chang. And then we're going to synthesize those and bring it back to the full council and look at what parks could benefit from more shade over the playground. Personally, I think there are some fairly obvious ones. I'm not going to say what they are because I don't want to taint anyone's... I see a recommissioner. I don't want to influence her opinion. But I will say that if there are any that you think should have shade, please reach out to me and let me know. I've had some parents already send me parks, and they say, "Look, I love this park." My son or daughter had their birthday party there. They've got a great picnic structure, but the playground's really hot. What can we do? And so please, bring your suggestions, email. I'm not hard to find. My business card has my cell phone number on it. And in general, I'd say that's one piece of feedback or one request that I have is please keep sharing your input with me and the other council members. It's really valuable. You notice things that we don't notice. And so when you are able to point things out to us, we can help solve problems, and I think that makes our city a lot better. Because, you know, we live in a certain area of town. We spend a lot of our time in certain neighborhoods. We may not spend as much time in the... I don't spend as much time in the southern part of the city, for example. So keep your input and feedback coming. I see Beth Culver has a question and a comment. Did you want to write your question and give your comment?
I have a gate. Do you want to get that there?
Do you want... You can ask your question. I can hear you.
Okay, it's kind of a nostalgic place for me because I've been coming here for years. I'm a four-year-old boy. Anyway, this is where I got my second degree doctorate years ago. Anyway, my question is, or my question, and it is, why aren't you so concerned about parks now when a year ago you voted against every improvement? That's my question. And then my comment is, I want to be helpful in this.
Can I ask you to hold your comments? And we'll do comments in a little bit for everyone? So I can address your question? I'm just grabbing...
So I'll reiterate my question.
Go for it.
Why? This year, I am so interested in parks when last, for your first year on the council, you voted against every improvement in the parks.
I know. It makes me sound like a big hypocrite, doesn't it?
There you go.
But I'm glad you bring this up because I would say that's not quite how things have gone. I think I've generally been very supportive of our parks and improvements in our parks. I've noticed a sort of line of statements or series of statements people have made about me pertaining to, I think, Arnold Cypress Park. And so I want to explain a little bit, I think, what people are referencing. So Arnold Cypress Park was, is, I think, the oldest park in the city that actually predates the city of Cypress itself. And it became, over time, rundown and increasingly in need of repairs or improvements. And I was 100% fully supportive of improving and enhancing Arnold Cypress Park. I think by the time I got elected to the council, the estimated price tag for Arnold Cypress Park was fifteen million dollars. And then it increased to, I think, twenty. And then it increased to twenty-seven and a half. And then I think within about the last month before we voted on it, it increased to thirty-three. And the Parks District was also going to take out a loan for it, which will cost the Parks District forty million dollars. That gave me some pause. For context, our Parks District budget is about nine million dollars a year. So from my perspective, and for additional context, the Parks District doesn't just cover our parks. They take care of a lot of our facilities. I think our senior center, I think this community center, all fall under the Parks District budget so that there's upkeep and maintenance and improvements at parks and senior center facilities in our Parks District. So to me, and my wife can tell you this about me, I'm a pretty frugal person, and I'm not a very drive-the-nicest-car, eat-the-fanciest-food kind of person. And so when I saw that we were being asked to spend four and a half times the entire annual budget of the Parks District on just one of our parks, I thought, "Boy, that seems like a loss." And so when this project started moving forward, what I thought would be a good approach was, given how much the price had increased, why don't we step back for a second and look at what would a lesser expensive option be like? For example, what if we just capped, capped the spending at twenty million on Arnold Cypress Park? From what I understood, we could probably still have brand-new softball fields with lighting. We could have brand-new pickleball courts. We could have some nice other brand-new amenities at significantly less cost, which I thought would allow us to also spend more money on some of our other facilities. And I think reasonable minds can disagree about what you think the right approach was. But from my perspective, and if you watched the council meeting where this was discussed, I thought, "Why don't we slow down and get another option or two and see what would it look like if we spent twenty million or fifteen instead of just kind of, I felt, going right to the most expensive option without considering alternatives very thoroughly?" And so that was a big part of my concern with Arnold Cypress Park. There's also something kind of funny that happened during that meeting that I don't know if people noticed. So the first person who moved to vote for improving Arnold Cypress Park was me. You might not know that because that's not the way people characterize it. But during that meeting, I said, "You know what? We're going to spend all this money on Arnold Cypress Park. Look, I want to improve the park. I want to have really nice softball fields. I'm good with the pickleball courts, but I don't want to take forty million out of our Parks District. So why don't we approve the park, but transfer ten million dollars from the city's general fund into the Parks District? And that way, we're not sort of starving the Parks District just with this one expenditure." And so that was an idea I proposed. It didn't get full support from the council. But I know that's a lengthy answer to your question, but I think it's important to provide the, you know, the true context of the decisions that were made. And anyone can go back and watch the meeting and see for themselves. So I'm a big supporter of our parks. I want them to be top-notch. And just because I had reservations about the price tag of one park, I would say doesn't change that. I know some people have comments, so by show of hands, who would like to make just a comment tonight?
I just got the phone. I'm ready to make a comment.
Oh, you have a question? So a couple people, why don't we take some comments? So why don't you come...
I actually have a question that I wanted to know if I could give this to you and kind of speak a little bit? I don't want to put you on the spot, but is that okay?
You want to give it to me?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's fine. And gentleman in the back, I know you have a comment, so if you want... Do you want to come up to the mic and share?
How are you doing? So I don't know if anyone's noticed. Cypress has really hard water, really terrible tap water. Like, it is absurd. I've lived in Northern California. I've traveled a lot. I've tested the water in Arizona and at different places. This is by far the worst water I've ever seen in my life. You know, just like outdoor faucet, the hard sediment that gets deposited and builds up over time. Showerhead filters just kept clogged. I believe it's still Golden State Water Company. Is that right? So I don't know what could be done or anything. But so I have, since 2016, I've had a water distiller. So it boils the water, and steam distillation comes out clean. The sediment that's left in the distiller, since 2016, I've noticed it getting worse and worse. I would have to clean the distiller, get your citric acid to clean the walls of the distiller because it just builds up. So it's just like this white crud that's hard rock. It is absurd. So it's gotten worse and worse, and I've noticed in the past year, it's gotten even worse. Now I'm having to clean the distiller every, like, two days. One before it was like a week, every week in 2016. Yeah, and the water tastes horrendous. I haven't checked, because we have diverse osmosis, we have showerhead filters. I haven't checked water state official tests in a while, but when I did years ago, there were multiple contaminants above legal limits in our city water. So I don't know if that's been cleaned up, but the water is atrocious. So I don't know if anything can be done about that, but that was my comment.
Oh, well, thank you very much for sharing that. And so this is an interesting one for me because I'm not an expert on this issue by any means. On the one hand, I know that there are types of water quality tests and things of that nature that I don't know if some organization does on our water provider. And from what I've been told, we pass those tests and we score well. On the other hand, as you were speaking, I felt like I saw multiple people nodding their heads in agreement with you. And so do you mind if I ask by a show of hands? Like, does anyone else feel that we have low quality or challenges with our water support?
No.
Hard...
Hard water.
Hard water.
So people are saying hard water?
I love hard water.
I don't have hard water. I can say my coffee maker every week, both of them, every week with acid because it builds up so bad.
Okay, so one thing I'm... Did you have something to say, sir?
I can comment.
If you'd like to make a comment, you can comment.
So that we do have considerable hard water in Cypress. There is a website that you can go to. Right now, there's a very large national class action... It's not a class action lawsuit. It's a... You might know what I'm trying to... No, it's a lawsuit, but it's not a class action. It's a tort lawsuit that's going on. And there's a website that shows hardness of water and also PFAS. And in Cypress, in this general area, though, it's not just Cypress, but in the Northern Orange County area, we do have higher PFAS counts than much of the nation, more than average. And so the tort lawsuit is taking in people from our area more than many other areas. So we know a lot of problems is known, and there are litigation going on.
Oh, well, thank you.
What's a PFAS?
Plastic... Well, it's PFAS, I'm not sure. It's plastic fluorocarbon acid. It's basically plastic in the water that is leached in. And some places have filtration systems in the water district that take out the PFAS content. You can only have so much PFAS before it gets toxic. And we have more than the EPA recommended or...
What's the website?
I'll have to look it up.
So we can... So I think this is a good, good starting point. So I don't have the answer to this. I think it'd be, I appreciate you providing some context. You know, one thing I would say to those of you who raised their hands, if you want to email me or send me a message just to confirm that, "Hey, Mayor Burke, I think we've got hard water," please do. And I ask that because I wonder if it might be any geographic areas of the city are more affected than others or something along those lines. But what I'm happy to do is try and learn more about it, learn if there's any potential solution. If there's not, then I'll be straight with you and say, "There's no solution, but here's the water softener or other products you can buy." But thanks for bringing that to my attention. And I think you're clearly not the only one who feels that way. And this is why this is actually valuable to me because I have rarely, if ever, heard that before. So thank you for sharing your, um, concerns. Uh, so I see two former council members who are interested in commenting. Uh, did you want to comment?
I just see the information on homewater.com, www.homewater.com. You put these in, it never shows up.
Okay, homewater.com, and then, um, former Councilmember Mallory?
Uh, thank you so much. Um, I think just I want to comment that the city has a long history of working, um, in partnership with Golden State Water. And I'm, um, I'm sure that this information will be shared with city staff and then connect with Golden State Water and provide, um, an, an update for you. They do regularly come out to council meetings and do, um, at least once a year, a presentation. So perhaps that you look forward and Golden State Water can come out and do an update.
Yeah, thank you. And we can also, if that's the case, we can certainly try and promote it widely so people know that it's happening. I think you have your question. Any other people who wanted to come forward and comment at this time? Did you want to?
Uh, yeah, I think there's still any questions.
Okay.
The water pressure in Cypress is really high and a lot of people, particularly applied pressure regulators, because they're, you know, how does it handle it? Depending on the pipes and stuff, that part of our water is just a percent of white paint mark.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, that's good to know as well. Okay, so did you want to make your comment?
Yeah, I'll just stay here. I have a question to comment. So I said, I'll just stay here. The sign you know, the water gets too soft, you can't drink it and you can't feed it to your pets and you can't, if you've got any kind of health problems, it's fatal. So I'm, so I'm mentioning that. Yes, I have a question and can I stand up and just ask? I don't know if you can come back with it.
Yeah, the microphone's mostly so other people can hear.
Okay, this question is on behalf of an increasing number, I have to read it because I'm script, I don't. Is on, on behalf of an increasing number of informed, concerned Cypress citizens. Our concern is about a possible conflict of interest between your nonprofit organization, Citizens Take Action Agenda, and the allegiance to the oath you signed and swore to uphold when you took office. Thank you. That's my question.
Okay. Uh, so I'm not quite sure exactly what the reported conflict would be, but I'm happy to talk a little bit more about my nonprofit and I appreciate that residents are mindful of conflicts and interests. So, uh, I have a nonprofit that I started almost a decade ago called Citizens Take Action. Um, I'm passionate about campaign finance reform, which is reducing the influence of special interest money in politics. I think from the national level to the local level, special interests have far too much influence. Um, nationally, maybe the best example in America is the pharmaceutical lobby, which simply spends the most money, um, in lobbying. And I don't think it's a coincidence that in the United States, we tend to have higher prescription drug prices than most other, um, western side democracies. I don't think that's some big coincidence. I think that's a reason. And so I have a nonprofit that advocates for campaign finance reform and more transparency through our campaign finance data. Um, and I think it's important that people are mindful of potential conflicts with elected officials and their own financial interests. Um, for example, you know, I know in a city, we were reviewing for a nonprofit, I'm not gonna name them, just out of kindness, but they had a, a council member who had a nonprofit in Southern California, Edison donated something like, I don't know, fifty, a hundred thousand dollars to his nonprofit. And then he voted on a contract to give to Southern California Edison. Um, I know in our own city, there's been a lot of, you know, sometimes there's entanglements between council members and organizations, right? Because sometimes council members are specifically involved, they're serving a nonprofit. Um, I know we had a situation a year or two ago where a developer had donated uh, thousands of dollars to a nonprofit, um, with, where a city council member was employed. And then the city council member voted on that project. I know we have, uh, through our nonprofit grants, sometimes the city awards money or grants to organizations where the city council member's spouse might serve on the board of that nonprofit. Um, none of that stuff is actually illegal, uh, believe it or not. But I'm glad people are mindful for conflicts. I'd say that good news with regards to my nonprofit is that it's just not financially entangled in Cypress funds in any way whatsoever. Um, my nonprofits never applied for, and we never intend to apply for, a nonprofit grant. My nonprofit doesn't spend any money to influence elections anywhere in Cypress or outside of Cypress. So there's just no real financial connection, um, between my nonprofit and City of Cypress business. Um, and of course, if there were, I'd, you know, disclose it as required.
But the Levin Act already is in place and that limits the amount of money that can be given to candidates. And so it's, it's now five hundred dollars per person. And that, and also you'd have to recuse yourself if somebody gave you money over five hundred dollars. You'd have to recuse yourself from something agenda that they want.
Yeah, you're, you're right. No. I just, I don't know, I'll try to be very clear. My nonprofit just has no financial connection to City of Cypress business or funds whatsoever. And. So I'll jump, I see your comment, but I do want to jump it back into a few questions before we get additional comments. Um, did you want to read yours? Did you want to?
Not sure.
I think there's also.
Yeah. So, well, first off, uh, my name is Jeremy and thank you, Mayor, for hosting this, um, town hall. This is kind of my first time. Uh, I did attend, I did attend, I don't want to take anybody's time. I did attend the Arnold Cypress opening and recently a city council, uh, meeting back in April. And my question is, is very specific. I don't know if you would have the answer, but I still kind of want to bring it up so that we can be mindful of it. So I live on, I live on Lincoln and Bishop. And there's approximately about forty families on there or on that street. Uh, we have, and the reason I have, um, the reason I can estimate that is because in my townhome, there's about sixteen units, a little bit further down, there's about twenty units. And there's like maybe two other single family homes there. And where my concern is, the, the city recently approved the development of twenty-six new units to be, um, done there. Um, and my concern was when I looked at the tract or the map tract that, um, the planning director had presented, there's only three visitor guest parking spots and that is very concerning to me. Uh, because for example, in my, um, in my association, I have about sixteen units. We have about eight, seven or eight guest parking, so that's about fifty percent. And they're all taken. The other unit further down has about twenty units and they have about maybe like thirteen guest parking spots. I know California has issues or challenges with, you know, development, et cetera. And, uh, when I spoke to the planning director, she indicated to me that the developer was following code and they only need two or three spots. So, okay, this, this might be a losing battle, but what can we do? Or what can the city do to minimize the impact? Because it will be a problem. And honestly, I'm here on representing the community there because a lot of the people there, they're not very outspoken. Even me, I'm more of an introvert. And if we don't, if we don't kind of bring this up, it's going to be a problem eventually. So that's, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you coming out and sharing. And so, so this is a tricky, this is a difficult situation, um, for cities throughout Orange County. And I think if you attended the meeting and spoke to the planning director, you kind of have a sense of it. So they stay in California, uh, the state laws have incentivized a lot of building, of new development. And to do that, to build more places to live, they've said, well, cut back on the required amount of parking that you need to have. And so often, when these development projects come to the city council, we have the same perspective that you, you do of really only three guest parking spots or, you know, whatever it is. But then if we ask the planning director, can we require additional parking? The answer is no. We can request it, I suppose, but if you put yourself in the shoes of developer, do you want to build another condo? Or do you want to build two more parking spots? And so that's the predicament we're in. I think the way you framed it of like, what can, what else can we do or what can others do? I'm certainly open to suggestions and I don't know that I have, you know, any great, any great answer right now. I think trying to be mindful of the overall development of the city, um, and how things are going to play out is something we can do. Uh, but this is a challenge even with the desirable in retail. Like, for example, we have the Square Development that I think a lot of people are aware of because that's where Trader Joe's is. And we've got the, um, Stretch Lab and Board and Brew and the condos and the coffee shop. And look, we're all thrilled that we have those businesses. But if you go there on a Saturday or Sunday, you can't find a parking spot. And that's the kind of thing that my wife and I talk about all the time, like, I just feel like people are generally a little more like stressed and squeezed than what used to be twenty years ago. And I feel like a big part of that is, I don't remember when I used to go to the grocery store when I was younger, having to look for a parking spot for five minutes and almost getting in a car accident twice. Um, but now we're just, we're just getting a little more closely pushed together. I don't think that has a great impact on people's overall moods. And so I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer for you. But I, I'm certainly open to like working with fellow council members and our planning team to try and figure out, knowing that the state incentivizes as much cramming into the development as they do, what can we do with that in mind to at least minimize the impacts, as you say? So I think that's an important question for us and something I want to, I want to try and learn more about. And feel free to, um, chip in any ideas you have.
I have a question to ask you. You can correct me if this is incorrect now, but I used to work for the planning and zoning department in the city of Anaheim. At every dwelling or even apartment, if it was two apartments, they were to have two spaces for each, two parking spaces for each apartment, if there were two bedrooms. But because people had lived there, were going to have more than one car. So this, okay, we'll extend the, uh, the guest parking, people were having to put their second car in the guest parking. So is that, what has changed then in this recent stuff of having to build all this stuff? They've cut out the parking that is allowed for, my neighbor had, wanted to have a place for two, uh, two cars in her driveway and they told her she couldn't do it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's, I'm not an expert enough to say exactly that's it. I just know generally it's, the parking requirements used to be a lot and now they're a little. And that's played out in a lot of ways. So I've got to compare and contrast the Parks and Recreation Commission and the city council's ad hoc subcommittee. So this is, I wanted to create a city council ad hoc subcommittee of two council members to take a close look at which parks could benefit from more shade over the playground and which parks should have their playground equipment upgraded sooner rather than later. It's sort of a passion project for me because I spent a lot of time in parks. And it grew out of, I talked to a lot of parents and we're hanging out in the park and they say, this park's great, but the playground's too hot because there's no shade. Or we love this park, but this slide is really old, it has a crack in it, do you know when it's going to be upgraded? And so in the city of Cypress, we have sort of budgeted for spending some money to enhance our parks. But we didn't have an, we don't have an answer to which park will be improved when and which park will get shaded when. So I wanted to figure that out. Um, and some people really pushed back against that idea. I was kind of surprised, to be honest. I didn't think trying to figure out where to put shade was a controversial idea. Um, but some people suggested that we were usurping the Recreation Commission by taking away their responsibility, I guess. And I think there are differences. Um, and so my understanding is not that the, I don't, from what I know, the Recreation Commission has not been, been asked in recent years to proactively identify sites for additional shade sales. Um, I went back through the years of minutes of Recreation Commission agendas and meetings and I didn't see that. So I don't think that this is something that, this is a project that was already happening. And one thing we also said we're doing is we're getting input from the Recreation Commission as we do this project. So while I know some people suggested this was sort of taking away the commission's work, I actually believe what we did was give the commission a pretty meeting homework assignment that we can work together on. And so I think that was the difference, at least in my opinion. What can our city do to band together with other cities to push back on bad legislation from Sacramento? Uh, examples, the regional housing needs assessment and minimal parking? So the way this typically works, um, or one way at least is when you're a city or you're a council member, you're a part of outside groups and organizations too. There's like the League of California Cities and they track bills in Sacramento. And they take positions on those bills. And typically, they're very in favor of local control. So if there's a state bill that's gonna, you know, impose new housing requirements on cities, they'll oppose it. If there's a bill that will give cities more leeway, they'll support it. So the main way we kind of band together with other cities is through that. I would say we, we're a member, the city of Cypress is a member of the League, um, of cities, but other cities are not. Other cities have kind of bailed out and they're doing their own thing. And so that's one way that we support it. And then we also get requests to write in, like others individually supporting or opposing certain bills. And that's another way. Um, so there are organizations that are kind of working on this approach and that's the main way we do it. It would, it would almost be, I think, maybe too much to ask of our city staff to say, hey, we want you to track every bill in Sacramento in addition to your daily work and, and tell us, you know, what to oppose or support. So we work with, we partner with other cities and outside organizations on that. How is the contract with Valley Vista a bad thing, as you say? So the trash contract has been a sort of ongoing source of controversy the past few years. And I think like any agreement, there are probably, in my opinion, I guess, good elements and not as good elements. Um, I think if you look at our trash rate, I believe it's about the eleventh lowest in Orange County. And if you look at the median trash rate, we're probably five or ten percent lower than the median. So if you look, just look at the trash rate, you think you've got no real cause for concern. Um, but of course, it's not just about the rate or the price you pay for something, it's about the service you get in return. And one of the reasons maybe this question came up is, I know that the Voice of OC had contacted me recently uh, because they did a survey of every city in Orange County's bulky item pickup program. And you may know what this is, right? This is, you've got a toilet, a water heater, a couch, whatever, they need to dispose of. And trash or city trash contracts have bulky item pickup provisions where they say, we'll give you X number of free bulky item pickups per year. In Cypress, we have two, um, items per year and that's extremely low. We used to have twelve when the original contract, um, was signed and that got scaled back to two. I know some people have said that's because. I know some people have said that's because people from other cities were dragging their bulky items here and paying Cypress residents to do that. And I'm sure that that happens sometimes, but it's kind of hard for me to logically imagine that people were just hauling their bike bulky items to Cypress en masse. But I probably wasn't here during that time, so I don't know. But what kind of alarmed me about it was the Voice of OC sent that. I believe 27 of the cities in Orange County offered their residents at least 16 free bulky items and pickups per year. And we only get two. So in that term of the contract, I don't think, it seems like we've got a great deal. And if you have bulky items like I do, you've experienced that yourself. We had a, we got a new toilet. We got rid of our crib mattress for my baby. A crib mattress, even though it's not that big, counts as a bulky item. We're done. That's our two bulky items for the year. And I know people have also said, well, you've got to tell the rest of the story. So I'll tell the other part of the story that people tell. We do have a day, I think one day a year where people can bring their items to a drop off location. And that's certainly like, in my opinion, better than not having that day. But on the other hand, it's certainly not as good as having the trash truck drive up to your house and pick it up, right? If it were easier, easier for me to put my water heater in my car and drive it somewhere, I would already do that. We also have a, once a year, I believe, Valley Vista, our trash company, does a citywide bulky item pickup day where you can put out as many as you like, I think, which is great. However, that's not actually in our contract. And so I'm, oh, it's not in there. And so I'm really grateful that they do that. But I think that when I look at, when I learn about other cities' contracts and they're getting 16 items a year plus like a unlimited pickup day, we're getting two and a pickup day that's not even in the contract. I don't, it doesn't sound like we're comparing very well to other cities in that regard. There's other things about the contract I could get into, but I know we've got other topics and questions and comments. But to me, that's, that's a big part of it is just price of overall. Pretty, compares other cities pretty well. Bulky item pickup doesn't compare as well. And if you're spending 70 or 60 bucks for an extra bulky item, that can add up fairly quickly. Okay, I see we've got some comments. So why don't you take a couple of comments and then I'll jump back into questions. So yes.
I just have a quick question. How long is the contract for?
So the contract has been extended until 2037, which I won't get into it, but I feel like that's another elegant of the contract that I wasn't a big fan of.
We're protected because the prices are going up all around us and we're protected. It's a beautiful contract.
Got different perspectives in the room? Mr. Byman, can you, the Henrys?
I don't know if I'm typical or not typical, but after living in the city for 30 years, we counted up all the bulky item pickups that we've done to zero.
Yeah, and I think, I think it can kind of go like that for a lot of people and you don't notice it. I think it's something personally, for most of the, most of my life, I haven't utilized it much. The past few years, I've moved around or moved and had kids and then I was really grateful for it. But yeah, I think if you're, it just depends on your situation. Any other people, any other comments?
I have a comment on garbage.
Sure.
Do you want to come up here or just say it from here?
Why don't you come up? Because I want to make sure people can hear.
Sure. Just a couple of items on, I know that it came up in the article that City of Stanton, for example, had unlimited. Two things, CRNR and Republic have their own landfills and they receive revenue. And when you, like the recyclables go there, so the state gives them partial money. So their pickups and the rates and the number that they're offering, the residents of whatever cities are doing the contract, are, they have a benefit because they have their own landfill. So that's my first comment. Not a lot of people understand that. So for example, if you wanted to go, maybe you'd already done your pickup. On the Eways, they say you have a TV. You can go to Republic at Henningson Beach. They ask what city you're from and you pull up. They log that and they count the items and then there's got partial revenue reimbursement from the state. So that's the Cal Recycle Program. The city of Stanton has unlimited for several reasons. The reason the city is, I am in Stanton every day, seven days a week. I have an elderly father with dementia who's in a facility on Dale Street. I see no less than two times a week, cars that come in front of me and they dump their stuff on the side of the road. So yes, I, I see it, or, or literally it's falling off the back of the truck. I see it all the time and it happened today as a matter of fact. So that city, because of the kind of city it is, they need it, that unlimited. And I think, I don't know if it draws additional people there dumping stuff. But I see it all, all the time. So I just wanted to point out those two things, that Republic and CRNR, which do service a lot of cities, have a benefit of having their own landfill and they get a partial rebate. So they're getting revenue. That is correct. I have to tell you, my husband's 40 years municipality. He, for example, negotiated a first contract in La Palma and
I'm 40 years in the waste industry.
Okay, well, maybe you have them need to talk. Yeah, we should know. Okay.
Well, it sounds like you two can grab a cup of coffee. Yes.
I have a quick change of, I guess I should probably go up there for a second. A little bit of a change of tone. I would like to commend the number of Cypress residents, of Cypress City Hall, Cypress Public Works, people that I've encountered. Christina, who's the assistant city clerk, has been very helpful to me because I have limitations and I needed the elevator to work. And she made sure that it, that I was notified about its status. The people who are working on the sidewalks and making them level. Because every time I go over a bump, it really hurts my arthritis. And they're working at it and they're working. I don't see them sitting around, now they are, I looked at their brakes and their hutch and everything, but I never see them doing that. I don't know if they go somewhere else or what, but they're always working hard. The people that are working at the Willow Park, which you referenced, the duck pond, they drain it, they clean it. And those guys, that's a yucky job. And they, they work at it diligently. And I just think we're very blessed to have such fine people working for our city. And I hope that you would pass it on. And is it, would it be illegal for me to bring cookies to the city clerk?
No, I don't think it would.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if I could or not.
I appreciate you saying that and, you know, one of the things is, yeah, as an elected official, you get to interact more closely.
Your mic fell down.
My mic fell down?
Yeah. Yeah, look at the cord. You don't want to get on the floor, do you?
Can I tell him in the next search?
There you go. That's right, David. I could hear you.
Hello? Thank you. And yeah, I was saying, it's been, it's real treat to get to know a lot of our local staff members and just see the commitment that they have. I was at Willow Park one day on a, I don't know, Sunday at 9:30 a.m. And one of our team members, two of our team members were out there. I said, what are you doing here? It's Sunday at 9:30 a.m. And they said, well, we had an issue. The, the water started overflowing. It was, you know, it was, as you said, a little filthy. And they were, they were out there promptly on the weekend, just solving the problem. They're on call doing it. And I appreciate that you try and maintain those high standards and we've got some great team members who do that. So I appreciate you saying that. I will pass that on. And yeah, I think the cookies would be well received. And remember, if you've got other questions, feel free to fill out cards and I'm happy to answer. So please provide an overview of the agenda item discussed in yesterday's special meeting. So we had a special meeting yesterday and the agenda item was to direct the city attorney to provide the council with, to the extent that any such information exists, any allegations or complaints, the report of any investigation and any additional materials regarding allegations made against the city manager. And you can listen to the audio of the meeting, which I'm glad that our, I know our city clerk posted online. It's about an hour and a half. We had, I think, almost 20 people comment. And so I think it gives you a good overview of that. The motion that I made for the council to get that information failed two to two. A deadlocked vote. And yeah, you can, I'd say, listen, if you want to know what happened and if you have follow up questions, I guess you can always contact me directly. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Two things. So I would like to see either better marked or protected bike lanes specifically on Denny. We have four schools and three parks in a one mile stretch. Thousands of students and families are walking and riding their bikes. We have strollers, even wheelchairs. And there are some bike lanes and some not. And then as you go farther down, getting closer to Lexington Park, the electrical poles are actually on the sidewalk and you can't do it like that. That wheelchair would not fit. A stroller does not fit. A bike with handlebars, like my son who's older, his bike, will not even fit on the sidewalk. And there's no bike lane. And so there's no way for those kids to safely get to and from all of those schools and all of those parks. And it's also heavy, heavy, heavy traffic, especially during pickup and drop off. So that's something I've noticed and I would love to see some attention paid there. I know you cannot wave a magic wand and make it happen, but just something to think about and maybe bring up. And then the second thing is, I visited Cypress Arnold Park. It's beautiful. I love that they fenced the playground for, for lots of reasons. And I would love to see similar fencing at Willow Park. And my reasoning for that is actually not as much for the children, although I would love the children not to get hit by cars, but the ducks, the ducks wandered into the street and they hit my car all the time. It makes me really sad. So something simple like putting fencing there to maybe try to detract the ducks from running into the street would be wonderful. And then also kids would run around the street. So those are the two things that I would like to just say aloud.
Well, we're, we're going to do more than, oh.
I'd just like to respond real quickly. I've got the numbers of all the poles and that's my next project.
You can't hit a pole by nothing.
I have to tell a fire department because my cousin, I was trapped between two of the poles and my cousin wanted to lift me and his uncle into the street. And I wasn't, I was more afraid of him getting me killed than I was anything else. I called them to save me. And the firemen told me, don't ever ride in this street. Because I get whole lot of in, because they said that people are a distraction and that they get a lot of calls on them. But she's completely right. And like, and like I say, that's my next project, which is the one after e-bikes.
Four schools, three parks, there's a lot of kids up and down that street every day.
But I don't know where you're going to put, are you going to put more of the traffic? You've got, you've got a problem there.
Do some, I have blind locks. I don't have a problem there. Maybe, I don't know. That sounds, I just hope these are all very expensive locations.
All right, so thank you and I don't want to out you, but I want people to make sure that they know you're not a plant based on what I'm about to say. So this is Brittany Cook Kanata. She's deeply involved in the community, PTA, sports, community festival association. We served on the festival board together. I know who she is. I say that because I promise we're not working together right now. But so regarding better bike lanes on Denny, I had a call with our public works director and our city manager today about our upcoming capital improvement program. And I mentioned, I asked about bike lanes on Denny. And so I think this maybe will give you some like insight into the challenges we have or I'll tell you a little bit about the situation. So bike lanes, you paint, you repave, et cetera. Denny kind of has haphazard bike lanes, I would say. They start, they stop. They're not totally consistent. And one thing our traffic engineer told me was, our former public works director had an idea, hey, when you're resealing or repaving the street, that's a great time to do the bike lane, right? Cost effective, not a one off project. Okay. But I, so today in the conversation, I said, hey, I think it makes sense to have better bike lanes on Denny. And I asked, when are we going to repave Denny? And apparently there's going to be an Orange County sanitation project on Denny. And I was told that it was going to take maybe three years. And so the kind of, I think the suggestion I got or if you're trying to say, what's the cheapest way to do this from staff was, wait till that's done and in 2028, you can do the bike lanes.
Okay, fine. Power poles then.
So my, my personal, my personal view is that we shouldn't wait till 2028. That's a long time and we have kids biking to school now. But this is kind of where you need to consider the trade offs and you need, it's a five person council. So it depends on to me, yeah. I understand it might be a little cheaper or a bit cheaper to wait till 2028, but I think given our overall financial situation, what we talked about, we've got tens of millions of dollars in reserve. If it's not totally wasteful, I think it's worth exploring doing it sooner. Because I know I'd feel pretty terrible if there were some sort of bike related accident on Denny Street in the interim while we were waiting three years for this sanitation project to be completed. So I'm not saying I know what the price would be and how much it would be worth it and how I'd vote. But I do think it's important to explore the options and sometimes the cheapest option might not be the best option just because there's other priorities that you care about. The ADA compliant sidewalks are tricky. That's another thing where I'd really like to hear from you, the residents more because sidewalk, that can be a pricey, expensive project to expand a sidewalk or I don't know what, move a power pole. But at the same time, I feel like it's really important to have ADA accessibility. And so again, these are the choices that you have to make as a council member. And I want to hear from you about if you're okay with that and what your preferences are. And you know what, not everybody will agree, but I think that's important to get community feedback. And then last thing on the Arnold side, we're on the Willow Park fencing. I swear, we're having a mind meld because I agree, I'm, I
Our kids are the same age. Those are probably, we're being the same, you know, little kids running the street. And we both are on that street. I'm worried ducks are always getting hit and it's just, yeah.
Yeah, I'm also a big fan of animals. And so I'd love to consider for our capital improvement program, put a fence around Willow Park because I've seen enough injured, wounded, dead ducks and turtles.
Arnold Cypress is perfect. The, the way they fenced out the playground was really, really well thought out.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, it's more water.
That's what you see kids running into the street and I don't want vendors to do it there.
Well, yeah, so the fence maybe help address that as well. All right, so great ideas. Alright, so, great ideas. Other comments or questions?
Yes. One thing I'm concerned about, Los Alamos took up a whole lane of traffic to put at least ten e-bike lanes. The traffic going down there now, because there was, that's a big drag strip. The traffic going down there now is in such congestion that everybody's sitting inside the streets. It's so bad. And yet the kids on the e-bikes are still doing the sidewalks and doing wheelies on the curbs and around. They don't use that bike lane. They use the sidewalks because they like to, you know, do their own little wheelie and bounce upon the curb.
Which, which street?
That, that's over there on Los Alamos Boulevard.
Los Alamos Boulevard, heading north just before the high school.
Yeah, that's where they, and they've taken up a good track of them. And it's always traffic. So as long as you don't do that to Denny, I can, yeah.
I wouldn't say it's done badly.
And I, I've actually stopped walking my dog during the time that kids are going to school because we walk on the sidewalk and these e-bikes come within behind us without any warning. And I'm terrified that my dog will react rather than respond. And so I've stopped walking my dog in the morning during those times because they just ride their e-bikes. And they're those scooter electric zooming right by you without a, you know, on the left and nothing.
So this is...
They need to pay attention to the rules. They just don't.
I may have been asked about e-bikes more than anything else in the past six months. So the good news I would say is, we did have our, we did have a presentation from our chief, Mark, Chief of Police, Mark Loderback. And if you haven't watched it, there's a video of it. And I forget the exact council meeting, but it's not too hard to find. We had an e-bike presentation about the current rules and enforcement. And it's a challenging issue. And again, this is another one where I'd really, I'd love to hear more from you because there, there are things we can consider. Some cities have said only kids can ride on the sidewalk on an e-bike and adults have to be in a bike lane. I'm curious to learn more and what, what you think about it. I, I had the random idea. I asked our chief, "Is there any law against kids using their cellphone while they're on an e-bike?" And I don't think there is. So maybe that's something we can consider. But I think the chief also had mentioned that maybe some of these ordinances these are passing because the state law doesn't like back it up, they're not as enforceable as you'd like them to be. And then law enforcement officers don't want to get into a chase with a, you know, quartet of kids on e-bikes. And so for me, this is one of those issues where let's just try and be more on the leading edge and look at what other cities are doing. But this is where your feedback is really valuable. Like, I think all cities are trying to figure out the answers to this and I'm committed to doing that. But any answers you have or suggestions you have, please send them our way because we, I know it's an important issue and I think we're all struggling with the best approach to handling it. So, back there, then you two.
My part, if a park's often new kids are riding e-bikes, they're very quiet. People are not paying attention. They're paying attention all day. They sneak up on people. It's really risky. And in my part, it says you can't operate motor powered vehicles sometimes, doesn't define e-bikes. I like to see no e-bikes signage in all the parks. Right on the grass or something. That makes a change. And they rip up the grass too.
With a penalty.
Yeah, that's... So no e-bike signage in all the parks? I saw a good amount of nodding heads on that one.
Pretty have that rule, don't they?
Well, I think we have, we have the rule, but maybe not the signage.
There's no sign would make it illegal to try to, they can't enforce something if they don't put the signs up.
So, yeah, I think that's a good thing to look at.
They have signs up in the park though.
I think you got a question or comment?
Okay, so I was at the city council meeting about the presentation of the e-bikes and it was a very good presentation. Is that gonna be something that's gonna be shown in like the local high schools or junior highs? Because that's where we need to get the message across.
Yeah, so I think that's maybe the most, and thank you, I think I, yeah, thank you. And I know you attend a good amount of our meetings, so thank you for that. And that's a good point. So Lexington Junior High has a program involving education, e-bike education for the students. And I think the students have to go through that if they want to bring their e-bike to school. And I think, you know, once they implemented that, you know, decent chunk of the e-bike traffic died down because some of the kids didn't go through the program or their parents didn't go through the program or however it works. So I did speak with representatives from the Anaheim Union High School District recently. And they are planning to implement the same program with our law enforcement officers in the fall. And so when the new school year starts for Cypress High School, we'll have that. I spoke to the principal of Oxford and they said they don't really have that issue because I guess Oxford, right, kids come from far away. To go to Oxford is not as much local kids taking their e-bike. So I'd say the good news is, we're doing that with our, partnering with our Cypress School District and Anaheim Union High School District on that. But it's gonna take time. It's gonna be a few years before I think all the kids are sort of, have gone through that and are educated. So that's a big step in the right direction. I'm really glad we have that program here in Cypress. And other cities I don't, don't have things like that. So that is something we're doing and expanding. And I think we're on the cusp of kind of maxing that out. So, go ahead and then Scott.
I grew up quite a few years ago and had, on bicycle, I was always in the street, never on the sidewalk because a bicycle has more in common with motor vehicles than it does road pedestrians. And so I'm in favor of bike lanes being in the street. I think Los Alamos did that well. I'm totally opposed to the barricades that are, in the, they took away the right-hand turn lane from Los Alamos Boulevard turning right onto Saravas Avenue. And so that particular corner, they did badly. But putting the bike lanes in the street, I think they did well.
And so can I clarify, so you support the bike lanes in the street, but, and would you want adults and kids to use those on? Okay, so can I ask maybe a straw poll? So Wyndham Park grappled with this in their ordinance and they decided, "We don't want to force kids into the street, even if it's in a bike lane" just because they thought that was more dangerous. And so they made it only adults in the bike lane on the e-bike. So what do people think? Do people think everybody in the bike lane? Everybody?
Everybody.
Or just adults?
What about if it's electric, it's in the street? If it's pedaled, say, each? Because like my five-year-old on her bike with training wheels, maybe she's a lot. But a fifteen-year-old on an e-bike is probably better in the bike lane. You know, maybe he's just teaching her to put it on his foot.
What, yeah, what line and age limit you create, I think is, you can debate that, but... That's interesting to see. So I appreciate the suggestion. I appreciate the participation. Councilmember Minikas?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to comment on the Denny Street current project. It's gonna take many, many years to complete. So I sit on the Orange County Sanitation Operations Meeting Board. And we're going to be, obviously we'll be starting that soon. But what I was gonna offer is, one thought was, I would come and get the information and bring it to the next council meeting. But honestly, I probably wouldn't be with justice. So I will reach out to the public work manager, OC Sand, and see if he can have somebody come out to give a presentation on what the size and the scope that is. And we're talking about replacing an entire tram line all the way down Denny. It's huge. It's a huge piece of pipe. And so what we're gonna do is we're going to have to maybe, don't quote me on this, maybe dig it down to one lane in each direction. So you're talking about construction equipment. You're talking about digging very, very deep trench. We're gonna have to shore that trench up on both sides to drop that pipe in, connect it, move on to the next section, next section, next section. So it's gonna be a big undertaking. If you remember what they were doing on Orange Avenue last year down by Cypress College, you could tell how that traffic pattern changed, rattled gas drastically, right? And caused traffic congestion in that area. So, but I'm gonna, I'll have all some people see Sandem out and give us all a presentation in the future as the council meeting.
Thank you. Well, yeah, thank you. Thank you for the, yeah, that's a great idea. Thanks for the teamwork. And I think that'll help maybe the council think through the bike lane issue a bit. Like if it's a, sorry, I dropped my mic here. If it's a situation where, you know, the street's gonna get really torn up in six months, then it probably doesn't make sense to paint a bike lane. But if it's a, well, we could, you know, paint a bike lane and it would, would be messed up for a few years. Then maybe it makes sense to do that. So I think the more information we have, the better we can figure that out. So thank you. Yes?
Actually, I have a question for Pastor Mayor, I guess, sort of as well as Mayor Berg. It's a two-part question. First of all, one, and this gets back to break these two. What's going on with Greenwich Avenue? I think they're, they're putting, do you like to quote, power lines underground?
Underground.
Right. What is, and Southern California Edison, I believe, is paying for that?
That's right.
Yeah, I believe so. We had to do that, we had to do similar pole movements and so on with Lexington Park. And there was a huge issue that had created with, when they built the Lexington Park and so on. That's right there on Denny. And I'm wondering, is there a way that we could, because it is gonna be a big undertaking cost-wise to do anything like that. But since we're ripping up the street to do the sewage thing, could we work with Edison to take Lexington and Denny, take those poles out so that we actually have a sidewalk without these people barrier poles or, and actually underground electrical there? Can we work with them and have that as a...
We're already gonna dig it up, we did it. Somebody call us.
Major, major projects going on simultaneously. I, I don't think that OC Sand, just logistically from a, from a construction standpoint, with that amount of equipment needed on public agencies, I don't think that's easy.
I can ask. Just because they're, you're right. But then the, the cost burden isn't on Cypress.
Oh, no, I totally get it.
And, and then, you know, we can have them do it. And also, aren't we doing a major electrical thing right there at the, the flood channel right there off of Myra and Denny? Conversation, yeah. Well, yeah, I think so. And could that be part of the works to just underground those electrical cables all up and down Denny and Lexington? So that it's a much safer area. Costs of maybe thirty, forty million dollars costly, but again, not to the city of Cypress.
So I think my suggestion would be, put that in writing and send it to us. And then we can bring it to our public works team and say, "Hey, these multiple projects are being considered in the next X years. Is there some cost savings or efficiency way to, to combine some aspects of it?" So yeah, if you put that in writing, we'd be happy to, so I'll, I'll throw an answer for you.
Do you remember the big old flood in Denny there and ball and all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then if they mess it up, we have no more and no power.
I remember that flood.
Okay, see another question?
Um, my question is in regards to coyotes. Is there anything that the city can do? I lost two cats to coyotes and I've seen coyotes in my neighborhood. And I called the police. They said they can't do anything. I called animal care. They said, "Well, they have a right to be in this area." And is there anything that the city can do to either like track them and put them somewhere else or something that, to save the pets in the area?
So I know that the city has done some outreach on this issue in the past and that sort of predates my time on the council. So I'm happy to look into it, but also if any of the current or former council members here want to attempt to answer the question about what, if anything, the city can do regarding the coyotes, I'm happy to give you a chance to jump in. And you can jump in as well, sir.
We had a meeting here back in two thousand seventeen and eighteen and a lot of citizens with their cats. And one of the things about removing a coyote, they'll come back. They're, they're too wild in Denny that way. So that was thoroughly discussed at that time. And, you know, it, it kind of sucks that you can't get a solution, but they're, they're wildlife. You gotta let them go.
Yes, so I'm at, go ahead.
Yeah. So it predates my term on council as well, but Mayor Berg's correct. And the city adopted a coyote management plan and it was around that time, yeah, it was beginning to be going on. The one real key thing that came out of the meeting was an emphasis on trying to collect more data about those encounters. And there is a phone number and an email address to report to. So they're trying to track the coyote activity. And hopefully that information could then inform more, more actions.
And they'd be trying to budget a little challenge of, mostly, I don't know, Cypress.
Coyote free, right?
How do you know weapons? And they're so...
The information is on the city of Cypress website. And if you want and just ask for the coyote management plan, you can find it. And so we have information there to do the reports. But yeah, the city's definitely aware of it.
Yeah, thank you. And my, so my condolences on your pets. And is this something that happened recently or?
Um, with the cats, it was a couple of years ago, but recently I've seen the coyotes during the day and normally they are out at night, but I see them daytime and of course, they're...
Yeah.
I've seen them all over the school. I've seen them.
And so I think, and I appreciate former council member Mallory sharing that information. And I think maybe what we can do since it has been better part of a decade perhaps since that plan or since the presentation is, we can at least check in and see, is there anything new? That, are there new solutions that people have to offer? And hey, maybe we can do another presentation during a council meeting or a presentation at a community center or something like that, if there is new information or strategies. And if they're not, we'll tell you that too. But yeah, that's a good question and it might be worth revisiting. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, if anyone would like to offer comments or questions to me directly, I will stick around for a bit. But mostly, I, I just want to thank everybody so much for coming. I got some estimates of how many people were turned out here tonight. And a lot of them were something I could count on one hand. And so I know a lot of you are regulars at some of our Cypress City Council meetings.
Or groupies.
But I know a lot of you and some of you are not. And so I really appreciate everyone coming out. If you think this has been informative or beneficial, I'm happy to post another one later in the year. Or at the very least, I'll do some events at the library or coffee shop events. But, so I want to express my deep gratitude. And I want to encourage you to continue participating in our local government. I think that, you know, politics can be stressful and intense these days and reading about national politics can be anxiety inducing. But this is our city. This is our opportunity to improve our community. I've already gotten a lot out of tonight just in terms of suggestions, ideas for things we can look at and the resources we can provide you. So thank you very much for coming out. And please don't hesitate to reach out to me anytime with any concern. I'm here for you. I would thank you.